You know, it's all raining down. You're low on time for it. So it's dip later. You know, it's working.
Oh, yeah.
So he shouldn't be. But that's right. I just want to do this. I still think about the whole thing. It's driving around.
Well.
And you're not going through that. Who takes care of my job? I had to see it like now. It's good. Oh, shit. Yeah, I should give it to him. He recorded on Thursday. I would say he works for Paul. He's a church now.
Yeah. And you're one of them, right?
We call it a basic order. Joint Beersford Planning Commission City Council meeting August thirtieth. Go public.
Mayor Nathan Anderson.
Here.
Troy Bowman.
Here.
Troy Jordan.
Here.
Art Shaw.
Here.
Teresa Langin.
Here.
Michael Fiedemann. And Lauren Roke.
Here.
Planning Commission Chairwoman Larry Ward.
Here.
Michael Bora. Lyndis Holfer. Brad Muller.
Here.
And Sanford Peterson.
Here.
Agenda was sent out. There are motion to adopt the agenda. Jordan moves to adopt the agenda.
I am.
Motion by Jordan, second to adopt the agenda and further discussion. If you're not all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Larry, you should do that for planning zone two. Okay, motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dan for a second.
Second.
Second by Brad. I'm favoring the aye. Motion to hear. I have a public hearing for anybody who'd like to comment on the joint public hearing, City Council, Planning Commission, regarding ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four, ordinance creating zoning regulations for cannabis 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 establishments. Mr. Mayor, can you roll with this for this applicable for a public hearing of the board? You know, back last spring, after the uncertainty as to when the medical marijuana regulations were going to be put into place by the state, the city adopted a moratorium preventing the creation of any facilities that would be involved with the sale of marijuana in any form. Part of that was to give the city time to review and analyze what they wanted to do in a regulatory scheme to control the facilities. And what has been drafted is basically a mod ordinance that was put together by the South Dakota Municipal League, obviously modified to meet the city of Beersford's zoning ordinances. And in going through the ordinance, you're required to have a public hearing because the change to the zoning ordinance needs to be adopted in the same manner which the original zoning ordinance was put into place by the city. So that requires a public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission. They make a recommendation to the council with respect to the adoption of a change to the zoning ordinance. And then the council takes action after their public hearing. This is a combined public hearing, so if the if the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to the council after this public hearing tonight, council that can do a first reading of the ordinance. And then at least five days would have to pass before you could have a second reading on the ordinance. And the ordinance needs to be published. If it's adopted, twenty days after adoption, the ordinance would then be in effect. So the timing of this is such that the plan would be about October third, you know, we'll be able to if everything's approved and adopted by the council and the recommendation coming from planning and zoning, that up until October thirty, you'd have these regulations in place. The zoning regulations that are being that were drafted is proposed to you, and I've worked with Jerry Elaine some on this. There's four types of medical or marijuana establishments. And I want to be clear, this isn't only medical. These regulations would be for any marijuana establishments. So if recreational is determined by the Supreme Court to be constitutional, these regulations would be in effect for anyone that wanted to establish a medical marijuana or a recreational marijuana establishment. So there's four types of facilities. There's dispensaries, which is where the retail sale of the products would be handled. There are manufacturing facilities, there are cultivation facilities, and there are testing facilities. And so there's four separate distinct types of marijuana facilities that are identified as state law. Those are also adopted or part of the proposed ordinance under the definitions. They would add definitions to establish all four types of facilities. The zoning issues that are affected, the state law says that you can, as a city prohibit, you cannot prohibit in total a dispensary from being established within the community. You can adopt reasonable regulations, but you cannot totally prohibit. You have to allow at least one facility. The regulations as drafted would allow for a cannabis dispensary only in properties that are central business or general business districts. By state law, it must be at least one thousand feet from any school property. So any dispensary or any facility, the testing, cultivation, manufacturing facilities at all, have to be at least a thousand feet from any school property.
Tom, I know you've got more to say, but I asked you about the new bus park. Is that?
I don't think that's a.
It's owned by the school, so it's school property. So I'm wondering, is that?
From a school, has to be from a school.
Well, you said school property.
I apologize.
Okay.
School.
I guess my if I can, can I say something? What's the definition of school? Because there's also daycares that have school curric- school curriculum. So the daycare one would be?
Not as it's drafted. You want to do that, I mean, you're gonna.
I'm just looking for, I'm just looking at, you know, you say you cannot issue zero permits. Well, if there's no place in the city of Beersford that one can be started, as far as like a daycare provider that does kindergarten, I'm just wondering if that's kind of a gray area there or?
Well, they're not, I mean, they're not a, they're not a school.
What about homeschool kids? Still not out there, it's gonna come up.
They're not a school.
Okay.
As defined by, that's what the legislature, the statutes provide, so. So the way it's drafted, you've got permitted use for cannabis dispensaries in either central business or general business districts. The other types of facilities, the testing, manufacturing, cultivation, would be permitted only in light or heavy industrial properties. So the, they would have to meet all the other requirements for setbacks. And there's a number of regulations that are in state law with respect to what the facilities have to look like, and they're not going to be, can advertise. I mean, there's certain restrictions they've got in there, and what they can do for advertising, with the signage and those sorts of things. So the other provision that was put in here after talking with Jerry Elaine, and again, a lot of cities are doing this, that a facility, I refer to as establishments, establishments would have to be at least five hundred feet apart from one another. So there was concern in a lot of communities that what if we've got four or five empty buildings in our business district? Do we want to have four dispensaries located there? So we've got a group. You would not be able to under the way this is drafted, you about every two or three blocks, you could have one at five hundred feet apart. So in looking at downtown Beersford, when you get more than a thousand feet from a school, the elementary school, you're talking about some of the fringe areas of downtown. You have to get, I think, do we figure north of First Savings Bank? About before any property, then again, maybe to the north and east, you would hit some of the downtown business district that might be eligible to have a facility. So the, again, the separations are contained in the ordinance. You can put a restriction on the number. Some cities are doing that, some are not, saying that the market will kind of dictate that. If it's only medical marijuana, it's not likely that you can see one here. I don't know that, but based upon what they tell us, the numbers for people that would be eligible for medical cards, you know, other than planned to be in the first one, same at the tribal level, there's probably not going to be a, you know, numbers wise here. I could be mistaken, but so, you know, if you wanted to have a restriction on the numbers, you could do that. But the ordinance does not have a number in there. If you want to add that, you certainly can. Sioux Falls is learning at the, the proposal's five, Rapid City fifteen. Some cities are doing one. Some are just saying, whatever it is, it is. That's the, that's the zoning part of it, so.
Is there going to be a limit on the licenses?
If you want to insert a number for the license dispensary, you can.
Are you going to do it for alcohol? Then you let it number alcohol.
There is.
Is alcohol for town or is that county or county where for licenses?
City. It's based on your population.
State law.
Well, yeah, the city owns the licenses, but they.
Yeah.
But that's based on your population, how many licenses you can issue.
The state doesn't have a recommendation, one way or another for?
They just say you can't. State working that prohibit them, period.
More of some of the questions I had the other day, and you said they were covered under the state.
The delivery, it has to be sold.
Has to be sold.
They can't be home delivered.
Inside the dispensary, no drive-through.
All sales have to be completed at the. We'll put in there no drive-throughs, here we have a drive-through window.
No curbside service.
Right. Have to be completed in the facility, in the establishment.
I got a question. If you do want to say one or two or three, whatever, can't you change the, the later date?
You could. Yes.
Open and come back and amend it to restrict later.
Yes, I mean, you wouldn't be able to not renew someone because you put a limit on, but it's.
Yeah, it'd be grandfathered without kind of a trailing because they help you want to hold on.
Right.
Have you done an estimate on how many there could be based on our zone?
Yeah, because then you've got five hundred feet, so.
A thousand feet pretty much wipes out all of downtown.
Real close.
Except for like Eddie Lane, Woss, and then you go across.
Eddie Lane might be down after.
They change over the rest of the.
Mason might be pulling his application, man.
Cross the street. The old gas station, they might be outside that thousand, it'd be real close. It would be any part of that property inside the thousand. Like if it was just a corner of it, then that's part of the block.
Yeah.
That's set by state. I mean, really. Get by moving it. Think about it, it's very far. That one was. That was probably.
That's. Rapid City fifteen. Tom, you said Sioux Falls is on five.
That's what their proposal is required. Rapid City fifteen. Sioux Falls, big concern, they didn't want to become like Denver where there was a dispensary about every other building downtown. I mean, that was part of their concern.
Troy says in here that we measure how lot line.
Lot line. Edge of the property to the edge of the.
The school has an empty lot.
They have an empty lot there.
They come back, I mean, that's part of, because they use that as part of school. You know, that's a P E facility, so.
So that, that's what gets you pretty much to the end of business history downtown.
Funeral home in north. You know, the empty lot out, I suppose where the carpet place used to be, that year.
That'd be outside.
That would be outside.
That's some commercial there, that lot, right?
I think that you just want to. I think that you just want to, just when a, my question was how much city tax revenue was going to produce from this?
Medicinal.
Cannabis.
I'm not sure how the context.
It's gonna be a lot more expensive.
So the number of establishments, maybe that's the first thing we need.
They need to make a recommendation.
They need to make a recommendation.
Well, it's everyone else's opinion, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, you can't, you said you can't do zero, so I mean, you'd almost have to do one or two, I mean.
One hundred thousand people, or, I mean. For the size of town, I would say no more than two.
That's kind of our outside.
That would be bad.
If that's what the planning board wants to make as a recommendation to you, that's certainly. And that's just the dispensaries.
We don't do it till we, are we doing now or are we doing when we do our?
Well, you, I mean, if there's not more comment from the public, you can take your action.
Okay.
If you want to, if two is the number, you can make that as part of your motion, and it'll be to recommend adoption of the zoning changes with the two dispensaries.
No, how many is the county? No, how many is the county? Or are you guys done yet?
Well, we're really the only, the only place that's interested so far in the colony is at the Dunes. And we've had, there's a doctor and one businessman that are looking at it, but we're, we're not going to have very many in the colony. What's your price going to be to get licensed?
The draft is five thousand annual.
Yeah, but the original license, what's the cost of that going to be?
That's what's in for five.
Five thousand?
That's what, I would say ninety percent of the city they're doing. Sioux Falls are doing more, but they can.
Our, we said ours at a hundred thousand.
That's one way to make sure you don't have any.
Well, no, they're.
Well, but you're, you're talking the Dunes versus.
There'll be some, but.
But they've also got a, you know, a population of a hundred thousand right across the river.
Yeah, I know.
Or more.
On both sides of the river, to the south and to the east.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't, I don't know, that can be changed, but there are people that are interested in a hundred thousand, I know that.
That's the initial, and then how much further?
The, the second after that, I think is, I think it's five thousand a year, I believe.
These are non-transferable licenses as drafted because the issue that's come about in a lot of places is you create a monopoly, so you gotta, well, you know, all of a sudden by regulation, you've created an asset for someone that pays an initial licensing fee. If they can't issue any more licenses, all of a sudden they've got a marketable asset. And that's what's happened with liquor licenses in Sioux Falls, they say we can't issue anymore, so now someone who paid a thousand bucks for liquor license, they've got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar asset sitting there that is created by nothing more than saying there's an overstatement on the number of licenses. But these are non-transferable, so you shouldn't run into that.
We locked in for the bike house, and I couldn't do like the, how many did we, we could say ten thousand or fifteen?
Do higher if you want.
Pardon?
You can do higher if you want.
I mean, who keeps the money? The city? Or we gotta give it over to the state or what?
Us, city money.
No, but then he's got to do his job, we gotta keep some guys on overtime or whatever, somebody. Might be a better idea, or kind of raising the.
Yeah, I'll take your money. What's the liquor license initial purchase?
Based on population, so do less than that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't it like a buck a, buck a?
At Sioux Falls, it's like a buck and a half or.
That's a dollar reverse, that's a dollar eighty-two thousand or. That's pretty standard around. If there's one value. So if we have liquor license, twenty-five hundred dollars would buy you a liquor license.
Have you had anybody ask about?
I've had one. I've heard of that. I don't know if any of you have. Have you guys heard anything?
No.
You had a person still, but.
My other question was, okay, let's say this all goes through, and let's say four people, different people come in all at once, how do you determine, let's say we give two, a lot of two, who gets some, the first come, first served, or?
City council gets to decide. And then there's some.
The state's got to give.
Yeah, the state's, they've got to get approval by the state.
It takes longer for someone.
Before they even come to us.
As part of, yes. Because if they apply here, and then the state approves it first, and then the city would approve.
Okay.
That's, that's a pretty big risk too, because like twenty-five hundred, that's non-refundable, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
You said though that these are for both medical and recreational, if it's passed.
Right, these would be in effect, cover both. Right.
So me recreational probably going to be worth, are going to be more attractive, so we would maybe want to increase.
Maybe the initial fee more.
I personally would like to see Planning and Zoning make a recommendation to the council that is, for the first year, more than five thousand.
I agree with.
I'm saying fifteen or twenty.
Yeah. Well, just like Teresa said, the recreation's probably going to be the better. I mean, that five thousand dollars, that's cheap. At least if you put like the Pedro or twenty thousand in there. They might think about it, but it's probably still big money.
Seriously, these people.
Yeah, will think about it.
So recreational pass, could we revisit and change the fees for future?
Could. But you, I mean, if it passes, you may have your application in before you have time to change your fees, too, so. And how it's set now, what do you think you're gonna want?
My concern is if it's not high enough.
Yeah.
Just my mind working the way it works, and individual want to buy it.
Yeah.
Just because, well, it, yeah, I don't know, set up shop, and all of a sudden is, is it there to be a medical marijuana dispensary or private use? Friends and family.
It's pretty important. That's still true.
They don't use a quality.
The license.
I thought it's two years.
I think they had one there. If they hadn't been used since prior.
We, we ordered some.
They, they don't recommend the licensing fee, that's.
Oh, that's on the council.
Theirs would be the number.
There's the number, we do the.
Oh, so we don't, they do the dollar, we do the. That's not in the zoning part, that's the licensing. Okay, that's what you guys don't have to address. It's planning.
Number.
They value your.
I'm, these guys are saying twenty to twenty-five, and I think we're right on the ballpark, just like you guys said, so.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Two.
If you want to make a recommendation for two, that's, we left a blank at the draft artist, just insert two, and that'd be your recommendation in the council.
So further thought on this dollar amount for the initial license, Nathan agreed to me. You know, the higher the amount, more likely it is that someone interested in setting up a dispensary might be a, a business that has maybe more than one dispensary in more than one community, and they're going to be more structured, more organized, probably better self-regulated. And I, if it's too low, mom and pop.
It's serious, it's important to be out there.
Yeah. And.
The, the state regulations are, are gonna pretty well ensure that you're not going to have.
Mom and pop.
Ditch week coming in, I mean, that, it's pretty highly regulated, the state.
So it has to be tested.
The contact has to be tested, and there's, there's a lot of security provisions in there, and they're going to have to be camera and.
The accounting and paperwork portion seemed extensive. Let's add the accounting and paperwork portion seems.
Will be, yeah, I mean, you have to be serious about it to do it. I mean, that doesn't mean you shouldn't set the fee at whatever you think's appropriate.
Twenty-five thousand has an extra ring in the buyer. And then five thousand per year after that?
Do you think, well?
No, I agree.
Do you think?
Twenty-five, seven.
You need, they're a recommendation. They're a recommendation. Okay. Were you guys talking two? Yeah. Okay. I mean, so that would be the best recommendation from planning zone to fees that.
We need more time, Jerry?
Yeah. That you have a recommended zoning changes with the cap, with two cap.
Okay. Their motion to appoint a city that approved the ordinance, put on a natural floor, zoning regulations for cannibal establishment, with the cap.
Two.
Right.
Motion by Dan is their second?
Second.
Second by Brad, all players, we are. Motion carrying.
That's what you guys can adjourn. As a board.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. You're free to stick around if you want to see the rest of the action. I think you guys have an idea where it might be headed. Yeah. Now you're back on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we're at item seven now, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes. So you got your recommendation for planning zoning for, this would be oh four, right? Yes, for twenty twenty-one oh four. The minutes would just need to reflect the first reading of that ordinance. Don't have to vote on it, that's fully required upon final passage. Okay. And then the. Then we move into the other motion. That's twenty-one, twenty twenty-one oh five, and the only change to that would then the application fee would be twenty-five thousand instead of five, and then renewal fees would be five thousand dollars annually as a.
It does say there are no refunds.
I wonder, yes. We have to change it to twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay. And then.
So twelve thousand five hundred.
Well, you'd only reimburse enough? But we could decide.
Oh.
You can decide.
Oh.
So they have to apply to us before they apply to the state?
They might be on their certification from state.
With the streets.
And that, the idea of the refund would be if someone applies and they don't qualify for what we use, the state says, they don't lose all their money. That was the implication. I don't know if you may.
Your work's going to begin after we get the certification from the state.
Really? So as far as retaining some in order to recover some of our costs, there's really minimal cost.
Up to that point.
On our behalf.
Yeah.
So does everyone agree that the first reading would include a twenty-five thousand dollar application fee? Is that consensus?
Yeah.
And the second part would be, how much would you reimburse? Does it have to be a percentage, or can you just say a number?
Say a number.
Twenty thousand reimbursed on twenty-five, so five thousand.
You'd keep five if they don't qualify?
Okay.
It's got no bite to it, your, your applicants aren't going to be quite sure that they're going to qualify before they put all that kind of money. You better be serious.
Yeah. And then, and then four point oh five oh seven, which is on page three, four, I think, of your ordinance, and you have the. And we have the two dispensaries. And then four point oh five oh eight is the renewal, the annual renewal would be the five thousand with the twenty-five hundred reimbursed if they do not. Receive the registration spitting for the Department of Health.
So five thousand.
On the, on the annual renewal.
Oh, 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 gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the initial, they would be reimb, they'd get twenty-five, twenty of their twenty-five back if they didn't get spit in the Department of Health.
So a renewal.
A renewal would be drafted as they get half of the, I don't know, about the five thousand back. Sorry. That's just the first reading as well, so with that, I mean, I think that has this ordinance in the same form, just determining those numbers, so. And we'll get those to you and with those changes and then posted up on the website as well, so.
They sacrifice or forfeit all of their license fees if they somehow get suspended or revoked by the state, correct?
Nobody. It's your license. And you do have revocation, suspension provisions in there.
And there's age limits and all that stuff.
Like twenty-one can have felonies within ten years. No, no violent felony, we get felonies within ten, I think.
I think it was just violent, was it not?
Yeah.
Like normal like felonies, it was just violent felonies?
And that's to purchase it of the customer or not?
That's to be, that's to be. Yep. If they'd not been convicted of violent felony.
What are the restrictions for purchasing if that's from them, once they set up an establishment? Is that been set?
I think, well, that medical, it's gonna be a medical.
That isn't our regulation, that would be some of them.
That's a state.
A doctor, the Department of Health or something that.
Yeah.
Says they get it, so.
Is there a tag on it? Do you have to open a dispenser or do you buy that?
If it's not active for a year, you don't get remunerated.
What's, what causes it active?
Being open for business.
Okay.
We did have hours in here too, like, it was eight AM to eight PM.
Have they said how they're going to monitor, like, is, are our police gonna have to go and do say a sting every once in a while to try and get?
We can't, we can't render any assistance in the raids of any dispensaries or anything like that.
How do we, um.
Won't they violate you?
Yeah.
Won't they open after hours or?
But if they're selling it anyway, if they don't store a medical card, how do we prove that they're selling it without a medical card?
They're, I mean, they're gonna be monitored by the state and their inventory's gonna have to match. You know.
That's what I'm saying.
Until Q public has a prescription for this amount of cannabis, and they're gonna have to show that that's a big expense.
But those rules are talks about how they store, sell, account for records, it's expensive.
It's gonna be regulated similar like the gaming industry, you know, dollars in, dollars out, we're all gonna have to be accounted for. And quantities of marijuana in and out are gonna have to be accounted for as well, so.
So Nathan can't smoke it all.
And you're here asking for a change in zoning, when you're talking to the mayor like that? So, if that, if this is changed, then I, we can make that.
Whatever, whatever those rules, it seem like anybody who's gonna try to open one up, better have extremely deep pockets. Because you're gonna be highly reguential. Accounting support, yeah.
Well, I think the chief's right, it's gonna be more expensive to buy it legally than illegally.
I'm talking like three thousand dollars an ounce, which is crazy high. I mean, you don't play that in the street. Not that I know.
That's a disclaimer.
Friend told me. I don't know.
That was my question.
I don't know that yet.
So, any other changes on the case?
I have one comment, Mike, make a comment.
Go ahead.
The only comment I would have is if we need to establish now where that money goes, when it comes into the city, if it goes into an account. But we are going to keep strictly for when there's a problem with this, or if it's gonna go like into a general. The comment I have is whether we have to do that now or wait.
I think I'm just going to the general fund, would it not be late?
Yeah. Thank you for the police department.
Then we could earmark that or something.
Do whatever you want in your budgetary process.
Sure.
In my opinion, I think it should go into a fund or an account or whatever you wanna call it, and it should just stay there. For when we have a problem, because there's going to be a problem that comes up over time.
My only suggestion on that, Troy, is I wouldn't put it in your ordinance that way. You can sure do that as part of your budgetary process each year, but. I wouldn't put it in ordinance that that's, there may be a time that you'd say, oh, it'd be nice to use those funds to buy a new police car, for example.
Okay, as long as now is not the time, then I'm completely good with it, thank you.
Okay. Unless, unless you feel differently, Ryan, for that.
No, it'll just be like a liquor license, just put it directly into that account.
You know what's in there, you wanna earmark it to be set aside for, as a reserve for some purpose, you can sure do it, as part of your annual budget. Don't put that in there, there's an input item. Okay? So other comments, I guess?
We just consider it's a first reading, right?
Correct.
Correct.
But it's published. It's just in the minutes that you have, it's a first reading of the ordinance by title and then. That you're meeting next Tuesday, since it's the holiday, they'll have a second reading and then. Adapt, and if that's where you wanna go. All right, item number eight, public hearing rezoning request from NRC Properties LLC, one five West Spruce Street to the Zonelade Block Six, original beer spruce from the Central Business District to Single Family Residential District R one. Consider first reading ordinance twenty twenty-one oh six is zoning.
Just a quick background on that, planning zoning did have a, a hearing on this at their last meeting and are recommending approval of the rezoning request. Um, the property and the request rezoned or included package along with an ordinance for your review. Nathan is here, and he's got some reasons of why he's looking to do this, and you just wanna speak.
Yeah, sure, so when we purchased the property, there was a residence in the back, had been for a lot of years, turned the front into more of a storefront, there was a plumber in there before that. Um, and now that we don't have anybody in the building, we would like to move forward, turn it back residential, we feel that's a better way to get it on the market after talking to several realtors with the housing being as tight as it is in, in the community. That this would be a, a good property to do that.
Single family?
Yeah, it's a one bedroom, Troy, so.
Single family is what we're.
Yeah.
You turn the whole thing into one residential or?
Yeah, one, just one.
Just one.
And our target market is someone that doesn't wanna have a lot of snow removal or yard care, or maybe they live here part of the summer and they go south in the winter. And that's probably using by, cause it's more of a studio feel.
They addressed, addressed parking over there, there's not a lot of off-street parking, so it becomes a little bit of a concern, but there's never been any off-street parking in that building, that's correct, day one, right?
Is there ordinance or zoning ordinances now, or have anything in there about having off-street or four o residents?
Yeah.
In order to qualify to be zoned residential? And there is no off-street parking?
There's none available on their own property. It's just, it's just, you, your property pretty much is the, the, the building is a lot line. Between the curb and the sidewalk, that's where the parking has always been for that building, or else it was provided around the backside.
So, if it doesn't meet that zoning, then is this something we can do?
Well, the, the business requires parking space also.
But not overnight parking during snowing the whole time.
I mean, there's, there's parking in front of it that's off the street. That accommodates probably three vehicles.
We've got a, a four plus over here that has the same situation. They have, they provide parking between sidewalk and the lane out curb.
It's got the, it has the same amount of parking there that it had when we had the apartment in there and, and the business in front.
Okay.
Be the same as like Fourth and Spruce, right?
Yeah.
On the same map?
And we've reported all that where that would be, where that is parked, when it's been all reported, when they did the funeral home across the street, we report that too. Cause a lot of times you'll get folks that are at the funeral home will park there too. So there's off, I mean, there is off-street, it's.
This would just be a first reading, like, a public hearing and a first reading of the, before the change?
We did not have anyone coming to speak about it, we notified a hundred people at the last hearing, no one showed up.
You were, yeah. Yeah. Perfect on the bull, there's a lot of options.
Yeah.
So technically it's off-street.
Technically, yeah.
Could make it pretty little parking if you had, but if you're worried about a car sticking out in here for the plowels or something, but.
Right.
This is just, you just know a first reading of this ordinance as well, that the public hearing was conducted in the first reading.
Is there a sidewalk that goes through that, that area?
Straight from the building.
So if you're parking on that, you're obstructing the sidewalk, correct?
Not if you're parallel to the building.
Well, if you're parallel, just, you probably only fit one car there, maybe?
Yeah, fit one, yep. Again, it's gonna be a one bedroom.
It's not a lot different than the old military school when there's a sidewalk.
Well, I, I know.
Cars obstruct down the sidewalk.
I understand that, but I, I do know that there's a lady in a wheelchair that uses that area and, I mean, it. It's a sidewalk issue, that would, I mean, that'd be.
Be nice to obstruct the sidewalk.
Well, they can't obstruct the sidewalk, I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
By ordinance, they can't obstruct sidewalks, so.
So.
If someone is using it as a residence and parks on the sidewalk, they can take it as.
Correct, yeah.
Any comments? Next item, rezoning request from Woody Hauser, five oh five, and one half south, West Thirteenth Street to Zon Industrial Track Seven, and east one half of the southeast, one quarter section. Sixteen and five north, R fifty W, fifth prime reading, City of Beer School. Consider first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one oh seven, rezoning amendment from the City of Beer School.
A little more background on that, to plan the zoning, held the, the hearing at their last meeting, so. Woody was present, one of his neighbors was also present to, to, to listen to what Woody had to talk about. The planning zoning voted unanimously to approve the rezoning from multifamily residential to general business. And I think Woody will talk a little bit about what his thoughts was, once it's rezoned to general business, so.
It, basically in a nutshell, just some more information, it'll be to the west, the entire four acres, it'll be between forty and forty-eight sites, we're still figuring that out. And. It'll be full hookup sites, there'll be year-round sites, so people will be back there the year-round. We got folks that want that pretty bad. The park, the present park is full.
I was just gonna ask, cause we had sold this property to, and with full plans of doing a housing development back there. And obviously, it's been just kinda left as a campground, so I just was wondering, I guess, what the plans are and. Need housing too, so.
Can't do housing back there, cause it's just too far for the street cost.
But you were very, I don't know, you could put a housing development from, through the whole campground and then we sold this to you at a very good price to do housing.
You wanna have it back?
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, Woody, that. You came to the city with a full-blown plan and now you're coming and changing everything, and so, I guess people have the right to make changes, but, you know, I was kinda looking forward to having that housing development.
Yeah. I'll stay quiet on that one, so.
I just got one question, um, according to Teresa, of this type of called side to road where it's done, where's the road in or out? If you, you gotta come in off of the off course road, come in and then exit that way to there?
Yeah, yeah, just like it is now.
Yeah, okay, that's my only question.
So you're gonna extend the road back there, no, well, there's just not the utilities under it, is what you're saying.
No, it's still the same road going back there that's there now.
It'll be a gravel road.
Just a gravel road, some asshole.
So that takes you right up to the overflow parking for slumber land? Is there any fencing requirements or anything there on the west side?
There's a ditch there already, so there, between our properties, they have a waterway ditch that goes all the way up to Nathan's house. Well, almost to Nathan's house, not quite.
They're going straight west of, can't really move, gonna pull down into the, you know, slumber land?
No. Pretty tough. Be a heck of a ride.
And these are year-round, so if they use it summer, winter, when they're making money off utilities, sewer and water.
Sales tax. The sales tax revenue is a big part of it, everybody's using the grocery store, the guys that are in here now are using it. We're just overwhelmed with, with calls for the campground, that's part, the part of reason we opened it up last year is because Iowa shut theirs down. And we had guys calling that said we had nowhere to go and we had to get out, we opened it up and that started.
Yeah, I was impressed, I was in there half a dozen times, I couldn't believe how many people are here.
Yeah, I would've done this, we planned, we looked at doing this for next year, the only reason we're moving and adopting rushing it is we just have too many people calling.
Quick question. Woody? I know there's some camp spots behind Andrew Jockey's house. And that's on his lot, is that some general business or is that residential?
That's general business, there's two separate lots there.
Oh, on this plot map, it shows that there's one lot.
No, it's two lots.
Okay.
We just lease it back.
The process here will be that, if you do a first reading, we'd have a, we'd have a second reading at the next meeting, and twenty days after publication it becomes effective. If not referred, then Woody could then have to apply to a conditional use permit, because that's as part of our zoning ordinance. We'd have to have that issued by the Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment would issue that, and so, and then. And if we know that, it'll be thirty days after they would have to make their decision, so.
So if it's rezoned to general business. You can't park a trailer and all this and stuff in there, can you?
No.
It's.
No, you know, they.
For a conditional use permit.
You could, you could put whatever terms to require that one. And the only could put whatever terms they require, but the campground is for the conditional use, the lot must have at least two thousand square feet and supply the city water and sanitary sewer. Access road to the campground shall be paved or surfaced in a similar manner to the adjacent public roads. Shall be approved by the city and shall be fourteen feet for one-way and twenty feet for two-way roads. That's all on the planning zoning ordinance for campgrounds, conditional uses.
So what did that say? Are the roads in the campground?
Lot, the lots must contain at least two thousand square feet and supply the city water and sanitary access. Access road on the campground site shall be paved or serviced in a similar manner to the adjacent public roads. Shall be approved by the city and shall be fourteen feet for one way and twenty feet for two way roads.
Access doesn't mean all the intermediate roads, just main road into the campground? It's, it's a blacktop all the way back, right?
It's a blacktop to basically Andrew's house.
With that, it's ground.
That is correct. Actually, it goes back to the office. Really, there's a little asphalt there too. And then the rest of it's ground and all the way through.
Many sites, you say will be forty-eight?
Between forty and forty-eight. It depends what width it is.
Downsize just a tad bit from last time.
Yeah, the map's a little bit off. We'll bring it around that ravine and we'll gain a few more right in there, but. It'll be, right now it's showing basically thirteen in each row. We're going to have to back it off a little bit. After meeting with department heads, how we'll set the transformers in there, what happens this like.
You won't have any additional bathhouses, playgrounds?
It'd be all the same, same laundry there. We, we added a washer dryer.
I got a question for you. Our sales tax, you mean, comment is getting better, maybe better? So I think we are going to make a minimum of the sales tax, gas, food and utilities, so I know it sounds perfect, but it's a start.
Yeah, the sales tax, we just talked to Brian and Jeff and a few of the other stories, but so far they're pretty happy.
Why don't you charge sales tax too? That's a less thirty, all for less than thirty. It's thirty or longer than that.
We did a few daylies in it, but not really very much so far, but we haven't targeted that market yet. So a lot of these people are going to set up like permanent campers? Some are. We got some, but most of these guys that are in there now and gals are all with the pipeline. We have the highway projects either here all the way to Hayward. We've had Amazon engineers and everything else in there. Got a new call just yesterday for the windmill blades up at Brandon. They were looking for a place to put their camper. They thought windmill campground sounded cool because they were going up there. And a lot of them are in the pipeline right now. Welders, the new digester at Dairy Farms with their line, they're coming in for that. And there's a big, I don't know if I call it a water tank or something they're building up there. And these guys are into welding and put that together. Actually, I was told today that the pipeline project, it's a two year project. They take out the old next year to put in the new. And now they actually have that plan to go farther and do a few more things and it could take as long as twenty twenty-six, so. We're going to have some folks around for a while.
When you say the permanent campsite, but they're not taking them off wheel and fixing to throw them.
No, 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 no. They'll always be on wheel. I don't want them off wheel. I want to be able.
Just then we just ran into the trailer court.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're not going to do that. And there's not a problem with only one ingress, ingress and egress for all these campers?
Because how many sites do you current?
There is, well, it started out with fifty-three. Kind of made shift a few more, but those are a lot smaller sites. They're not as big as.
So we're looking at approximately a hundred sites when you're all done.
Do these hit the two thousand square feet?
I don't think I'm quite there. What you said, I didn't mind.
Yeah, take a look at the zoning.
I gotta have that up. I think I'm a little short.
You have a good point. Only one, something happened.
We did a piece on it.
You got a hundred campers that are trying to get out. I mean, I think about the fire that happened down at Marpoint, you know, two hours ago and they had to get everybody out. Now there's only one in and out there too, but.
We only got one area out.
All of them are that I know.
Yankton has two. You go.
Yeah.
Like you have north witness one.
They lock that two and two.
What's for the north? It obviously works.
What do you have to say? My only, I think it's a good question. I just would come to us with one plan. Didn't go follow through with that plan, so I'm just obviously skeptical. Are we going to follow through with this plan or is something else going to change? So that was my only question. Why are we now changing after those plans from before? So. I have heard good things about the camp.
Things too much. Is the only storm shelter we have at the pool now is, what is the post office still open there's up?
I don't know. That's not handicap itself. That's full. I don't think we even have the lease on it anymore.
Yeah, we said everybody is cool.
What's the capacity of that? Three hundred is something like that?
Is that open in there if there were a lease?
That could be.
Mike's guys are open to the mills, but lights on.
Three hundred could get all coming down.
Must be wrong. Trying to run.
Any questions? We'll consider it's a first reading. Uh, new business, funding to Beersford Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. I thought I did one, but I.
You did.
I thought I did like a month ago.
Wouldn't Carol go back to point at me?
Oh, no, no. I thought, Doug Allardings off there.
Oh.
I thought I put him on the chamber.
Oh. So I still?
Still.
Okay.
Yeah, you're still.
Somebody else could have, if you really wanted.
Doug goes to all meetings anyways. Doug do one at a time. One at a time?
Yeah.
So I would, I'd like to appoint Doug Allardings to Bedco Board. There's a motion.
I need to make a motion to appoint Doug Allardings.
Motion by Sagan, seconded and thirded. To appoint Doug Allardings to the Beersford Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors and further discussion. Is that all there's at?
I'm opposed.
Prove and the second would be, with Brian Fields leaving with the school. We've always had a school representative. Sit on the board. I had a meeting with superintendent last week and he requested that Jared Olson. Serve in his place on Bedco, so I'd like to appoint Jared Olson. If there's a motion.
Motion to appoint Jared Olson to the Beersford Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Thank you. Motion by Tina and seconded to approve, appoint Jared Olson to Bedco Board in further discussion. There are no others at? Post, approve Bridges Golf Court lease renewal.
Mr. Golf Cart, Golf Cart, like everything else, will become harder and harder to come by. There's nothing, there's no newer one to be available for Mr. Golf Cart. Next year, so they would like to go ahead and renew fifteen twenty twenty easy goals that we have. At a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents a car. And we also have fifteen two thousand sixteen easy golf, uh, golf carts at ninety dollars a cart. And Ben's happy with this. We have two year lease, so they'll have parts for two more years. They've been good to work, but. It's a six month typical lease and usually we're going to use another month if we'd be, if we're still busy, so. It's worked out good for us. They've been good to us and Ben's recommended that we go ahead and sign off on this. They want to get answer back very quickly. Otherwise they have other people looking for these parts, so.
That's per month. Hundred and twelve bucks per car per car.
Yeah. With a maximum of six months. So if we use them seven months, they've always been good to us. If we say beat them, then we'll come pick them up when we're ready.
So the board knows to approve the golf cart lease renewal with Mr. Golf Cart Inc. Motion by David and seconded to approve the lease renewal with Mr. Golf Cart Incorporated. For the discussion. There are no others at?
I'm opposed.
Lease agreement approved and part time hire for parks and golf.
Derek Lipperson actually came in on Monday over last panel meeting. He, he filled out an application. I told him he couldn't hire until he had him on the agenda, so. We're back to Derek Lipperson on there. I have most, all of the part time happen, all of course, and the park have now left for the season, so. Just remember, it'd just be seasonal type stuff. I'm working through probably October, November.
At what rate?
Uh, ten forty-five an hour.
Sean makes a motion for part time hire for parks and golf, outside meetings, he's thirty seconds late.
Motion by Sean seconded to approve the hiring of Derek Lipperson, part time for parks and golf at the rate of ten forty-five per hour. You're for the discussion. There are no others at? Post.
Well, some of these car manufacturers are now. I saw your brother, he says she owns. You ain't no like a true.